Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for coming to our meeting tonight. Before we begin, we will have an invitation offered by Commissioner Brady. Followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, we are gathered here today to serve you and conduct the affairs of the city of Sandusky. Give us knowledge and strength to do your will. May we accept our responsibility and act with courage considering the feelings of other people. Grant us a sense of justice and stewardship, both now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Ms. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Commissioners, if you can, before you, the minutes of our meeting of April 2, 2017, was the pledge of...
Mr. Chairman. I'm with you. We accept the minutes of the April 10th meeting in dispense with formal reading.
Second.
The motion is second, Mr. Chairman. Objection or motion be approved. Your objection, the motion is approved. The proclamation, we presented a reminder that all cell phones are needed. It's silent but often during the being called...
Arrest yourself. Good reminder.
I didn't know that was your chief. But that is our role here, ladies and gentlemen. This is a non-cell phone number. And then we have a proclamation being presented by Commissioner Walker.
Now? Okay. Just want to make sure.
Is that okay? Do you want to come back to it?
No, no, no. We're good. We're good. All right. This proclamation is for Arbor Day upcoming. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees. This holiday, being called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, including in Sandusky, where in 2017 marks Sandusky's 27th anniversary as a Tree City USA. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, abate issues with stormwater runoff, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and protect the health of our city and Lake Erie. Trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Murray, President of the City Comis... Oh, I'm sorry. That's... No, that's not me. That's you. I, Greg Lockhart, Sandusky City Commissioner, do proclaim this day, actually Saturday, April 29th, Arbor Day in the city of Sandusky, and urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And let me say that on Saturday at the city's greenhouse, we'll be celebrating Arbor Day. There'll be hot dogs and food, and it'll go from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., and that's at 601 Franklin Street, just at the corner of Franklin and Monroe. I hope you all will come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, now we turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any of our agenda items? Our agenda items over. Please touch the microphone. Give us your name and address and with the remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Couple of items, just, you know, some questions to throw out there to get you all thinking a little bit maybe. Item number two, which is the Clean and Green... I'm sorry, Clean and Safe Block by Block program. When you get to that section of the agenda, the question would be, is what out of that $100,000 that we're going to be spending through the city and through downtown Sandusky Inc., what is the profit margin out of that $100,000 that's going to be kept by the Block by Block program? The other concern would be, are we funding maybe a project that is not necessarily needed at this time in downtown Sandusky? I believe the Block by Block gentleman that was here last meeting said that we have a relatively clean downtown as it is right now. The other item would be, perhaps there is another funding mechanism by which the downtown merchants may be able to pay for this program entirely on their own at a significantly reduced cost from the $100,000 that is proposed at this time. The other item is number seven, replacement of transit buses. When you get to that point, again, could somebody explain to me what happens to the old buses that we are retiring? Do we sell those and use the proceeds from those sales to purchase new buses instead of maybe taking money out of the general fund or capital fund, whatever, we're taking that money out of to replace those? I know at one time there was discussion, and I think, Mr. Mayor, you kind of led that charge, that the transit system should be a self-sufficient operation, but it looks like we're into the point now where we've kind of accepted the fact that we're having to take money out of the general fund or whatever fund it's coming out of on a year. So when you get to that point, maybe you can explain it. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anyone else present wishing to address the commission?
Just about any of our agenda items tonight, Judge, the transient rentals are certainly on our agenda.
My name is Bagh Magooki, and I live at 1205 Cedar Point Road. And I'm just having one question. I'm of the opinion that your legislation that you've worked on for the transient rentals has been well thought out and all of that, and I think it's appropriate in certain areas and all that, so this isn't that. My thing is, my next-door neighbor who is being grandfathered, and the neighbors on both sides do not believe that they rented before the time period, and I want to make sure... I think there's only one really definitive way to identify if a transient rental should be grandfathered, and that's by proof on a tax return. You have to identify which property your income came from, and I know they have other rental properties, and my concern is that they, you know, if they provide proof through their tax return on this particular property before the date of Judge Tone's ruling, I don't have a problem and I'll live with that, but I don't think they can, and I don't think they've been required to show that proof, and that's my only concern right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Abby Demis. I reside at 322 Hancock Street, and I'm also the Executive Director of the Erie County Economic Development Corporation at 247 Columbus Ave. And I'm here this evening to reiterate our support at the Erie County Economic Development Corporation for Agenda Item Number Two, the grant to Downtown Sandusky, Inc. Hopefully you all received our written comments as well. We at Act Act really feel that Sandusky's downtown is an integral part for the community and the entire region. You really see no other place that's such a concentration of civic landmarks, public spaces, residents, commerce, and as such, it's a huge draw for visitors, it's a huge draw for residents outside the region, and such a high-traffic area, I think that the neighborhood serves as a reflection of the entire city and the entire region, and I think its image and character need to be protected and preserved in a cleanly environment. So that sentiment, I think, was reiterated by the business community when we visited them last year through our Business Outreach Program. We spent an afternoon in the fall in Sandusky's downtown, and while many of the merchants that we talked with were very positive about the increased investment they've seen in Sandusky's downtown, they did have some reservations on the general upkeep and cleanliness of the neighborhood. And I think anytime you've got private business investing in a place, it's the public's role to be sure that investment is protected and supported and encouraged, and I think that this grant to Downtown Sandusky, Inc. really does that. It's responsive to their concerns. It's a pilot initiative, so it tests the water and sees whether this is a sustainable investment for both Downtown Sandusky, Inc. and the city itself. So I just want to reiterate that we at Act Act support the legislation and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Demis.
My name is Al Pujo, 1618 Willow Drive. First off, I'd like to thank, I counted 10 of the assembled people up here that were nice enough to give me their time to talk about short-term transient rental, sometimes up to an hour and a half, and I really appreciate that the city commissioners, the police chief, the city manager, the law director would all, and Ms. Binnington would all find time to talk to me. Mr. Poole, I need to thank you more because you were the first one to respond to my email, the first one to come and meet with me. I was impressed you listened, but more importantly, you gave me a lot of good advice of how to proceed with the rest of the time. When you're old and gray, of which I meet that qualification, you understand with experience that you never get everything you want. And I've been able to look at this legislation that you're going to be dealing with in a first reading. I think Mr. Harris has put together a fine piece of legislation. If I had my way, it'd be stronger, but I definitely think it's the kind of legislation that is needed in this community, and I can accept it. I think you've done an excellent job of trying to protect the residential neighborhoods. I would hope the city, if this passes, I hope the city will use every avenue they have through the media and through flyers and mailers to let the residential areas know what is acceptable for short-term rental and what is not. I know you have an enforcement person for zoning, and I hope that person or anybody in that department's numbers are readily available, names are readily available, so that residents, if they have a problem, know who to get a hold of on a Saturday, a Sunday, whenever, so that they can deal with if, if there are ever any problems with this legislation. My goal from the start was to protect all the residential neighborhoods in town, and I really think the city manager, the planning people, the city commission agree with me that that is very, very important. And the way I know that is because I've read what you said. I've listened to what you've said. I've read newspaper articles of what you've said, and I apologize for having to look down to read quotes, but I want to get them exact and not miss something. But the first quote comes from your own bicentennial vision report, January 25, 2016. "There must be a sense of neighborhood pride in a community among residents." I think that's very true. Commissioner Waddington, in a Sandusky Register article by Mr. Oriol, wrote on January... or commented on January 4, 2017, "We want a more vibrant city, and it starts with strong neighborhoods." Again, a very good statement. And finally, the before-mentioned Mr. Poole, Commissioner Poole was quoted just last week in the Register. The ultimate goal here is to create an environment that people want to move into. I think all of those are very, very good comments, and I could go on through the comprehensive plan that's listed on the website, through this book, and through many other articles of comments about how strong neighborhoods are. You have to understand, those quotes would run counter to any legislation that doesn't help the neighborhoods, and I think that's what you're trying to do, but those quotes are all for strong neighborhoods. Short-term transient rental between two people, one trying to raise a family, one trying to peacefully retire, does not help the neighborhoods. I'll close with one last comment here. People come from all over, wide range of states, all over Ohio, come to the Sandusky area, and they come for a multitude of reasons. I think the big three would be the lake and bay and all the water activities that means. I think they come for the island life of Kelly's and Put-in-Bay, and I think they come for that little park we have down at the end there called Cedar Point. That's why people come here. They're going to come here for those things. Contrary to short-term rental landlords, they're not coming because they can find a house in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Thank you for listening, and thank you for good constituent service.
Thank you, Ms. Pujo. Anyone else present wishing to address the commission on any of our regular agenda items? If not, then we're going to turn to a hearing, which we will formally open. This is a hearing on amendment to the Planning and Zoning Code regarding transient rentals. I suspect that's why a fair number of folks are here tonight, so... Mr. Harris, I think that you're going to present on this.
Correct. That might elicit the help of Casey and Angie, if where needed. And through you, Commission President, this is a public hearing on the application that was submitted from the Planning Department for an amendment to sections 1107.01, 1129.06, 1133.05, 1133.08, 1137.03, 1137.04, and 1151.08 of the City of Sandusky Planning and Zoning Code Regarding Transient Rental. In your packet and in the communication, you will see that this was a joint communication submitted by the Law Department as well as the Planning Department, and you will see the creation of the City of Sandusky Building Code, Section 1341.32, Transient Rental Property Regulation. Although it's not required to have a public hearing on the actual administration or regulation aspect of the proposed amendment or creation of the 1341.32 section, I would ask that you open this public hearing up to those folks who wish to offer any suggestions, criticisms, concerns regarding that section.
Agreed, and you can assume and deem it as opened.
All right. Appreciate it, sir. The application to amend the aforementioned sections with the Planning Code were designed to serve three functions. One, the staff felt, and just I want to correct my former teacher and principal, Mr. Pujo, it wasn't just me, it was an effort from all the staff in terms of putting this legislation together, Casey and Angie and Matt, so I just want to give thanks to them as well. But the purpose of the amendments to the Planning and Zoning Code that were submitted to the Planning Board and unanimously approved dealt with three issues. One specifically was that although there was an adequate definition of what transient rental or transient occupancy was, the staff felt that a better way to define transient occupancy would be to actually define transient occupancy instead of defining what transient occupancy wasn't. So there was an amendment to change transient occupancy to the use of a dwelling for a period of less than 30 consecutive days. Secondly, there was a proposed addition to the Planning and Zoning Code to allow for a transient overlay district that would be implemented through the commission, the Planning Department, on a case-by-case basis in potential residential neighborhoods. And lastly, it provided, I think Judge Magooki commented on a mechanism to prove legal nonconformity or grandfathered in properties. So with the amendment for the legal nonconformity, what we have, it was presented to the planning, I believe Commissioner Poole actually, he heeded the advice of Judge Magooki and wanted it to just be tax returns, but that motion failed, and the Planning Department allowed for proof of legal nonconformity status to be the use of tax returns as well as prior year's contracts. It's the staff's request to ask the commission to adopt those amendments that were submitted to you today through the Planning Commission, as seen in your packet. Lastly, with respect to the creation of 1341.32 of the Sandusky Building Code, as you're aware, Matt Lasko's department is responsible for code enforcement of not only housing code issues but rental properties. You can't have transient rental in a community without having some sort of regulation mechanism in place. The proposed addition of 1341.32 to the Housing Code took in consideration regulations that are seen in other communities that allow transient rental from Savannah, Georgia to Hilton Head to Myrtle Beach. So there were strong considerations of other transient rental communities taken into account when we adopted these regulations. So we ask that the city commission also adopt that amendment as presented, and with that, I would turn it over to however the commission president wants to handle this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Ms. Binnington and Ms. Sparks, anything that you wish to add at this point? Okay. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Mr. Harris, I, to be very specific to Judge Magooki's question, I would like you to just circle back to that for just a moment, and if you would cite 1151.08. That's scary that I know those numbers.
I agree with you.
But we are very specific that we do have very specific requirements dealing with establishing nonconforming use, and my knowledge, and I would like you to confirm, that that is either a tax return showing leasing the property, or tax return or contracts between residents that they've leased to. So it is an either-or type of thing, but we do have stipulations for that.
Correct. Through you, Commission President, Commissioner Brady, it's either previous tax bill showing income from property providing transient occupancy or signed contracts indicating the dates in which the transient occupancy use occurred. And in all transparency, to answer your question, Judge Magooki, once the city has offered a certificate of legal nonconformity, we can't go back legally and ask that they provide us additional information. What we will do, though, is that the legal nonconforming status has to be proved on a year-by-year basis. So after this legislation, if it's adopted, moving forward, so if someone applies for a permit in 2017, whether they were grandfathered in for the permit, for the 2017 permit, they will have to prove, if they were a nonconforming dwelling, would have to provide either a tax return from 2016 and/or signed contracts from the previous year. With regards to properties that you may have issues with in terms of whether you believe they truly were grandfathered in properties, what we do know is that they were offered a certificate of nonconformity based upon, at the time, the Planning Department felt was adequate and the city felt was adequate, and I understand that you have reservations as to whether that sufficed at the time, but we can't go back, we can only move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Some questions, so I understand what you just said. Some properties were offered nonconformity, but they didn't accept or receive it, is that what you're saying?
No. Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Poole, during the time that Judge Tone had the lawsuit pending with regard, or had the case pending with regard to these properties in residentially-zoned areas that were using their properties or dwellings for transient occupancy, after that case came down, the city, to establish that they were renting the property for transient occupancy prior to Judge Tone's decision, we accepted, like, sign-in books and other things, other than tax returns and/or signed contracts, and then offered them certificates of nonconformity based upon receipt of signed, you know, guest books. And what I'm saying is, we can't go back and say, that's not good enough for 2012, 2013, 2014, but you're still a legal nonconforming property, and that status is only valid if you continue to use that property for the legal nonconforming use for a period of years. So moving forward, when you apply for a permit, you have to provide us with a tax return and/or a signed contract from the year prior.
I understand what a tax return is, right? That's the correspondence that you signed and swore to, that you sent to the federal government, whatever. Signed contract, if I'm not mistaken, you can tell me, is something I print out on my computer, I put dates on, and I find somebody to sign them. The things you just discussed deal with nonconformity in existing properties that we have already accepted as nonconformity. It's not conforming, which is fine. The issue with signed contracts is, and I would ask, how do you verify, when I bring you my signed contract, I live on East Old Gate, how do you verify that it actually occurred? See, the tax return is pretty clean, much higher level of easily to accept it, but I can put together a signed contract tonight, and I would submit that for our purposes, this is just a back door to open up citywide to anybody that chooses to be bold enough to step up and write the contract. We have no mechanism for verification written in here. It just says you'll accept signed contracts. I would suggest if it was, if it should be grandfathered in, and it was used for transient rental, we simply accept that and the proof be something that is clear without any problem, and we just say, okay, we don't have any questions about whether we're running an above-board and honest program for folks in these neighborhoods. Your explanation to Judge Magooki about things she may have concerns about that were accepted already as nonconforming isn't the issue unless I misunderstand this. It seems to me that if I come to you next week with the signed contract, that I can get not, I can be nonconforming in my neighborhood. Is that, do I understand it correctly?
Through you, Commission President, Commissioner Poole, if you came to me next week and your property is located in a residentially-zoned area...
I believe it is. I didn't check, but I think it is.
Yeah, it is. What we would first do is say transient rental in residentially-zoned areas is illegal, so you can't get a permit. What will happen then is that there's some properties, Mr. Ebner's here, he had a case that was the subject matter of Judge Tone's decision that we're talking about, those folks that can prove that they were renting their property as early as, or prior to Judge Tone's decision, they will be able to apply for a permit. But if you were the first person to apply with your property, and we look at our list of what we suspect to be grandfathered properties, and you're not on that list, what I'm telling you is that you're going to need to provide us tax returns for the past seven years dating back to prior to Judge Tone's decision for you to be able to prove that you've been operating your residence as a transient rental without any ears of interruption.
That sounds... Okay. So transient rental can be grandfathered before Judge Tone, or anyone who's been doing it between the time Judge Tone's ruling and now?
No.
Which is that? Could be grandfathered, potentially.
I believe that even the legislation that we're amending...
Okay.
...made it illegal for people to rent their property in residentially-zoned areas. However, the handful of properties that were the subject matter of that Judge Tone decision are grandfathered in and have been given legal nonconformity status. However, if those folks do not rent their property voluntarily for a period of, or fail to rent for a period of more than 365 days, they lose that status as well.
I understand all that extra stuff, but we started out with what I thought was about 13 at the time the judge... I want to know what grows that number.
What grows that number is, through you, Commission President, Commissioner Poole, is that once this legislation gets passed and adopted, if a person comes out of the woodwork with proof that via tax returns and signed contracts that they rented their property in 2012, 2013, 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017, then those properties may have a legal nonconforming status. And situations that that may arise would be if someone had property owners next to them who knew they were renting the property and just never made a big deal about it. And do we think that there's some of those properties out there? There may be.
Okay. What you just said was and signed contracts, what this legislation says for... What you just said was and signed contracts, what this legislation says for.
Or, okay.
And I'm, okay, so you had to be, had to be renting from 2000, the judge's ruling, straight through?
Correct.
Or just not prior, or just like last year?
Straight through.
Okay, so, all right. The point is, why do I need, why would we just take signed contracts by their own since they can be produced, reproduced easily without authenticity? Why are we accepting that when the property tax should be just sufficient?
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Poole, I believe the staff's recommendations, I think the staff's recommendations at the time were just to get tax returns, but I believe the planning commission, upon hearing, some of the folks that were proponents of transient rental, allowed for the addition of signed contracts. And I understand your concern, and that's why we presented it to the planning commission as we did.
Mr. Chairman. Just a correction, no, the staff presented it as if...
Oh, yeah, I apologize. And then Commissioner Poole...
And they declined to discuss it at all.
No.
They didn't discuss it. We did not discuss it because it failed, failed, failed to get a second.
Yeah, I apologize. You made a motion to...
It just came through, and they, it was approved because the staff said to. Without an opportunity to have the dialogue that I'm having with you about the outcome from doing that, we have an obligation, Mr. Chairman, this is for the staff, for the commission, an obligation to protect those neighborhoods from being scammed. And I suggest, and if you'll just address how you can verify, and through this, these signed contracts, what do you have in place to ensure that the, that we're not, we're not adding things that don't belong? By using falsified documents?
Mr. Harris, if I could help you out just a little bit?
Please.
Because I think the issue is a due process one, we have to put our finger on it. A lot of tax returns are not going to show the particular property from which the income flowed. Depending upon the nature of that particular person's returns, it's not going to show the address. And so, I think you have to provide kind of opportunity for proof and the alternative. Because otherwise, if they've got a complicated tax return, multiple rental properties, or other types of income, it's going to be buried, and it's not going to show the address.
I think you do show the address when you file.
I don't believe that's correct, but I could be, I don't, I don't prepare tax returns.
Can we ask someone who has rental property that might know, Mr. Chairman? That files?
I...
You have to identify the specific property, I can't remember if it's Schedule C or Schedule D or E, but...
Okay, well, then I stand corrected.
Then, the question's still there.
But to answer your question, Commissioner Poole, we understand the complexities of verifying whether it's a fake contract. What we would do internally was reach out and contact individuals who were parties to that contract. But we understand also that people, even though it's a, maybe someone might come down harder on you if you, if you lied to the IRS, someone who lies on a contract may also lie to the IRS as to whether they generated income. I mean, no one wants to pay taxes, but we have to.
Mr. Chairman. I, I, I don't want to get real deep in the weeds on this, Mr. Harris, but I would, I would point out that perhaps what we've had here was something slipping through the cracks from one recommendation to another. And what I'm referring to is a communication to our city manager from Casey Sparks and yourself on April the 19th of 2017. And it is, it is very specific in that, in that summary of proposed amendments and additions, it is very specific, that the planning commission has recommended that only annual tax returns and prior year rental agreement shall be accepted. So, that recommendation is not either-or. It was very specific that only tax returns and the rental agreement shall be accepted. That, that's the communication dated April the 19th of 2017. And I'm not faulting anybody for how we got to this point, real easy to miss the word "and" or, but I think to Mr. Poole's point, it's a big deal if you're going to fictionalize a lease contract, you are much more inclined to fictionalize that than you are something you're sending to the federal government. So, I just, you know, again, I'm not, I don't want to turn this into a witch hunt or be accusatory regarding it. I think there is a way to solve this, and that is, later in this meeting, that can be solved through an amendment to this legislation, if this body so chooses. But again, I'm not being accusatory, I think staff has done a wonderful job, I'm just reading the communication, and it is very specific that that recommendation that was accepted by our city manager from Casey and yourself was, that both of those things had to be, had to be fulfilled.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I have a question, does the staff have an objection to that amendment when it comes before us?
The staff doesn't have any objection.
Done then.
Other comments, questions by commissioners? This is a public hearing, therefore, anyone who wishes to speak to the issue of the amendments being considered may step to the microphone, and same as before, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts.
Sorry, I have to get up here one more time, and I don't mean to be labor this point, but I have the situation, the way I'm reading this and the way Justin explains it, and correct me if I'm wrong, if my neighbors were issued that permit wrongly in the first place because they weren't required to show proof of whatever, now they've got, they're being issued permits, so the tax return would not be required of them, all they have to do is show they had an existing permit, and I, I just have a hard time with that, like, they shouldn't have been issued it in the first place. I went through multiple contacts and emails, and bugged everybody down here for a long time, including you probably, and there was no standard of proof. Well, now there's going to be a standard of proof, but that doesn't help me out, because now you're saying, just because they got one the year before, even if it was wrongly granted under Judge Tone's ruling, I have to live with that, and I'm having a problem with that. Why can't, I'd like you to explain why you don't think you can go back and say you were issued that permit wrongly in 2013 or 2012 at the end of the year? And why can, why can we not go back? In my case, that's all. Why?
I think you answered that before, Mr. Harris, but if you could summarize again, please.
Just in summary, legally, and standard proof is probably a good, good word, but what we're dealing with is past evidence relied upon in making a determination as to whether a property was being utilized as transient occupancy, and due process would prevent us from now looking back five years and saying, I know we didn't, we didn't require you to give you your tax returns or signed contracts, and we allowed you to give us a signed guestbook. In those events, I can see or envision the individuals who were giving this certificate of legal nonconformity saying, it's 2018 almost, I threw away my signed contracts because you already gave me a certificate of legal nonconformity, I may, I may not be able to locate my tax returns. Just from a legal standpoint and a due process standpoint, could we have done it better in 2012? Yes. But we can't look back at, but moving forward, they would still have to prove that they're utilizing that property as a transient rental.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? And this hearing is closed.
For the record, I disagree with that. I don't think it was...
Were you getting out of the way? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Can't spark with the judge.
And what about my due process? No offense, I had no chance to come to a here and contest their...
Is she finished, or?
Their, what, the proof? So, I'm sorry.
Berlin Turcik, 119 Greenbrier. I would like to support what Mr. Poole had said. I remember coming to a meeting where he specifically had asked for it just to be the tax bills and not signed contracts. And on page five, the 1151-08, it does say transient occupancy tax bill or signed contracts. So, I would support if the planning commission and commission believes that that should be amended to either remove signed contracts or make it a and signed contracts, I would believe that's appropriate.
Thank you, Ms. Turcik. Anyone else wishing to speak in this public hearing? Otherwise, the hearing is closed, and that amendment will be considered, I'm sure, shortly. Next, we have a presentation by Greg Vols, Assistant City Planner, and Connection with the Clean and Safe Program, otherwise known as Block by Block sometimes.
Thank you, commissioners. Last week, we heard from Downtown Sandusky Inc., Alan Griffiths, and Block by Block, Charlie Stevens. Today, we have Mark Laman here from Block by Block. Last week, they talked about Downtown Sandusky Inc.'s desire for a Clean and Safe Program for Downtown Sandusky, and I'm just here to talk about how the city plays a role in this. So, as Ms. Bima's mentioned earlier, we heard through various residents, business owners, and visitors that there's a need. This quote from Ekadex Annual Business Expansion and Retention Report says, "Businesses were generally encouraged by the city's initiatives and progress in community development. They were particularly, particularly interested in Sandusky's new economic development programs and the number of new businesses in the downtown district. Many felt optimistic about continued growth in downtown Sandusky. Respondents did indicate some basic areas of services to assist downtown growth. Primarily, businesses would like to see public services such as trash collection, snow removal, and public safety improved upon. Additionally, respondents want to see increased programming and events to increase downtown traffic." There's currently over 100 businesses or organizations in our downtown district right now. We've had two downtown merchant meetings in January and March. The people that showed up to these merchant meetings were downtown merchants, they would like to see increased beautification efforts, that was mentioned both times, and the key issues were sidewalks, no removal, cigarette butt cleanup, overflowing trash containers, especially on weekends and holidays, goose dropping cleanup, events set up and tear down, weeding and cleanup of tree grates, wiping down and fixing public amenities. Also mentioned was a need for more wayfinding assistance with helping visitors find where they need to go. We also have heard through various register articles and mailbag questions about overflowing trash cans and other services lacking on weekends and holidays. In 2010, Downtown Sandusky Residential and Retail Market Strategy, funded by the City of Sandusky and Sandusky Main Street, recommended increased focus on maintenance and maintaining dedicated staff for business district maintenance. So, we have the need, and we have an organization that's willing to commit $50,000 to fund a pilot program to take care of this need. As noted in the presentation from two weeks ago, Sandusky Main Street is doing business as Downtown Sandusky Inc. and is undergoing a strategic planning process. Public space management is one pillar of their ongoing strategic plan. A Clean and Safe Program is prioritized for the organization, and just recently Downtown Sandusky Inc. received a grant to set up a special improvement district, which allows for a long-term, sustainable funding mechanism, and will ultimately remove the city from funding this in the future. And the business owners, or building owners, would be the ones to decide whether or not there's a merit of this program. So, Downtown Sandusky Inc. has committed $50,000. They're requesting a match of $50,000 from the City of Sandusky. This request would be matched from the Economic Development Fund, and that is admissions tax dollars, so it's separate from our general fund. I'd like to go back to Block by Block. They are a national provider of programs, I believe there are nearly 100 programs, this says 90-plus, but I think they're almost at 100 right now nationwide. Their customer retention rate is 98%. They have a strong support structure from their corporate offices. And Block by Block brings many things with them. They bring purchasing power, insurance, training, best practices, allowing the manager over 90% of the time in the field due to corporate support back in the, back at corporate headquarters. So, much, so, this is such a liked program that Ohio City and Cleveland just recently doubled the size of their Clean and Safe area because the business owners wanted it, and the building owners saw the usefulness of it. Where a Downtown Sandusky Inc. employee would have to do research, paperwork, and, as shown here, would not be able to report back as substantially as Block by Block is able to. I believe Alan Griffiths has some handouts for Block by Block, and he could hand them out to commissioners and anybody else that would like to see it. So, these are reporting capabilities, you can see here, it talks about hours of using equipment, amount of safety escorts, block faces cleared of snow, feet of pathway cleared of goose poop, requests for police escorts, and measure pounds of trash collected. That's something we currently can't offer. As you can see, the service area where this will be provided is almost 50% within an area maintained by the City of Sandusky. So, last week, people mentioned that business owners should be taking care of their area in front of their business. Well, what happens when trash is somewhere down Columbus Avenue blows back in front of their business when they're trying to take care of a customer? Or cigarette butts are thrown as people walk by? Or goose poop out along piers is not cleaned up? If we're trying to maintain those places as well as the business owners maintain their stores, I think it's vital we help. The Clean and Safe Program will hire on-street ambassadors for Sandusky. They will engage with the public, provide clear directions and offer knowledge about Sandusky. They're detail-oriented, they want to make Sandusky a better place, and they're, Block by Block hires for personality, and then trains them for the skills. Services will be provided on weekends and holidays, and hours flexed to have ambassadors on the streets at high-traffic times. I'll get into, try to go through these pretty quick, the amount of things they could do. And it's important to notice that these were taken, all these pictures showing up outside of the winter ones, were taken within the last two weeks. So, these are after city staff worked very hard to get ready for the state of the state, and after the governor's visit to this great town. So, they'll take, they'll pick up litter, cigarette butts, leaves, gravel and rocks, cans, cardboard, boxes, plastic refuse, vomit, dead animals, beverage spills, anything like that. These pictures, that one, bottom one shows, I believe, french fries thrown on the pier to feed some seagulls, and up, the one on top is just a few items of trash. These are just gutters that show some things that the ambassadors will pick up, there's broken glass in the one that's all the way to the right. This is an overflowing trash container on Monday night after our last commission meeting. There's also trash underneath a bench on Shame Islander Plaza, I believe that's a fruit, some fruit, broken down somewhere, and some items in the tree grate. They'll wipe down public fixtures such as trash cans, they'll pick up the dead fish that's on one of the Sandusky Bay pathway things, they'll clean up gravel and loose items, they'll do weed control, they'll make sure that they're always clean weeds so that we're not having dandelion bushes showing up in the middle of our parks, pick up tree grates, weed out those, weed around our fixtures. They can get equipment to do gutters and pick up leaves, they can remove stickers, posters, and utility arms for poles, take down items from utility poles, and they will wipe down and clean up newspaper and magazine boxes and kiosks, they'll remove stickers from benches and that sort of thing. They can also help with graffiti removal, and pressure wash spills and stains, and goose droppings, as seen here, and I... And I believe we're not even at high goose dropping time yet, so those are always bound to get worse. They will do special projects, so that includes painting of fixtures, benches, light posts, bike racks, also sidewalk snow removal. Our benches desperately need a little bit of attention, as well as our street posts. And when we do have really bad winters, it'd be nice to have a little, some extra hands on the sidewalks to clear these for customers. They will do, they can help with the Sandusky Greenhouse to do landscaping projects. So instead of having an overgrown, weeded flowerbed, the greenhouse can call them up and say, hey, we just need your assistance with this small project. And then after that's finished, the Block by Block employees could help maintain those flowerbeds rather than weeds going back all the way through them. I think this is very important. We talk about how we want to bring more events downtown, whether they're small-scale or large, and these employees could help with setup and tear down of these events, whether that's street furniture. And as more organizations look to bring more frequent events to the business district, and also small-scale placemaking such as putting Adirondack chairs or whatever it may be out in public places, Block by Block employees could help set up those and tear them down. They can also assist with guests and helping them find where they need to go, jump cars, getting business contacts and contacting city issues, city employees when issues arise before a resident even takes notice. As we invest further into our city, we're doing projects such as the one show, ones showed here, where it's a new sidewalk and Jackson Street parking lot. The Jackson Street parking lot is built to receive a lot of the stuff on the street, so it's important that we have people out there cleaning it so it doesn't become worn down and is not able to maintain, thus saving costs over time. As we look at other things like increasing our investments in the Sandusky Bay pathway and Shoreline Drive, I think this need is even more important than ever. It also helps the downtown business owners by taking care of the public domain just as well as they maintain their stores. Help signal to residents and visitors that our business district is clean, welcoming, and a place for people to spend time, and allows for an increase in large and small-scale events. Ambassadors also act as outreach to people in need, and they are trained to act as outreach. They're trained to help homeless, pan inhalers, and other issues. And I would take note that cleanliness is also a key aspect of walkability. Being in a clean place is very important because it makes you feel more comfortable to walk around that place. Leads to allowing our greenhouse and seal staff to focus on working other neighborhoods, whether that be the Colorado Cemetery, the Sandusky Bushes, or other long-neglected small parks that haven't been touched in a long time. This frees them up, and Mr. Spear is here, you could ask him a question if necessary, but it frees them up to really focus outside and focus at what they really do well. So maybe the Sandusky Bushes can be improved, or maybe there might be planners along Hancock Street in the future, or something along those lines. And I think that's a really important piece of this as well. So this leverages private organizations' money to offer a service that is cost-effective. The City of Sandusky putting $50,000 from admissions tax to fund a pilot program with a $50,000 match from Downtown Sandusky, Inc. Just a comparison, one full-time maintenance two-position is $72,000 salary and fringe. We currently budget $164,000 on seasonal part-time employees, but the Downtown Sandusky, Inc. is proposing between 80 and 128 weekly hours for $50,000 from the City of Sandusky. So there's a big difference there. The pilot program also creates a set of services that downtown building owners will see and appreciate, which leads to creation of a CID. The CID provides cost to run the program by assessing the building owners directly impacted by the services and removes the cost to the city over time. This is another reason why we think that Block by Block is appropriate. Downtown Sandusky, Inc., if they were to hire in someone to do this, they're not trained in best practices, trained in hospitality, assistance, snow removal. They don't have the equipment for pressure washing and other special projects. The city doesn't have the flexibility that Block by Block employees do, and Downtown Sandusky, Inc. couldn't do this full-time. I think it also goes back to the corporate help. If a Block, Downtown Sandusky, Inc. did do this full-time, they just wouldn't be able to provide the same services because instead of doing 90% of their work in the field, they'd be only doing 50% because they're doing paperwork and other items that Block by Block does in the corporate headquarters. So I like to think of Downtown Sandusky's competition as lifestyle signers, i.e. Crocker Park. Their advantages are that they're under a single owner, so they're consolidated resources, which makes it a lot easier to maintain. Our advantages for downtown are it's authentic, it's a civic center, and it's also on the waterfront, something that almost no lifestyle center can replicate. The CID combines the two advantages above, so the pilot program will help unify the building owners, and the pilot program allows building owners to see how a CID would function. Then the business district could become a third leg of stool for a concentrated tax base. So Cedar Point has sweeps and maintenance constantly working in their parks, so you get an enjoyable visit. Fireland's is constantly cleaned and maintained. We believe Downtown Sandusky could be equally well-maintained with a group effort from Downtown Sandusky, Inc. and the City of Sandusky, which would help downtown become an even bigger net contributor of taxes. So here's a couple more pictures of a before and maybe an after. So you can see there's an overgrown tree grate, shade mylan and plazza, maybe we have bistro tables or any other public space furniture out there, and a utility pole or light pole that has the paint all removed. I just want to end on saying that rarely do we get a chance to bring something to the commission that tackles nearly an entire page of our strategic plan. We believe this pilot program directly impacts seven of the nine bullet points on page 25 of our strategic plan, which is titled Destination City. From providing a clean and safe and welcoming downtown to placing the building blocks for activating and improving our public spaces and beginning in the process of implementing a CID, the Destination Downtown piece directly mentions many of the items Downtown Sandusky, Inc. is bringing to the table with this pilot program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vols. Commissioners, questions, comments to Mr. Vols?
No, I'll wait.
All right, then, Mr. Vols.
Chairman, we're done, yeah. Let's go back to that slide that's got the graffiti on it. I was trying to figure out where it was.
The picture on the left is of our artistic wall down Peddler's Alley.
I don't see graffiti on that one, but okay. To the right.
On the right is, I believe, Mr. Hare's building on Water Street.
I think it's a great opportunity for so many. I think it's a good opportunity for the city, for Downtown Sandusky, Inc., downtown merchants, downtown residents, and every other resident in the City of Sandusky, for them to come down. Sandusky's 200 years old, so it looks a little tired, and if we can freshen this up and clean everything up, it's just going to attract more people to support the businesses. And I think it's an opportunity for the city to support the business owners and the residents down there. And I couldn't agree more with what Abby Bemis said, and she's a resident and works downtown and works for Ekadex, so she definitely has the knowledge and knows what's needed.
Mr. Chairman. I do have a question. We had several years ago, Main Street's had a program downtown where they actually had someone do this. It's not included in the conversation in terms of, that was a pilot program. I'm trying to figure out, what are we trying to convince the, those folks of now, the downtown merchants, if this is a pilot, to convince them they should participate? Let's talk about what we've already done. I thought that was the pilot we did, but we already did.
Alan from Downtown Sandusky, Inc. could respond to that question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And through Commissioner President, Commissioner Poole, I'll be honest and say it was before my time, but my understanding was that Sandusky Main Street at the time provided one part-time employee in the summer times who acted as liaison to the business owners and the members at the time of Sandusky Main Street. And she did provide some trash removal services, and as much as she was able, some individual assistance to a clean and safe type initiative in downtown. She was one person with limited equipment, limited time, and a lot of things to do. And I think the general consensus from the Board of Downtown Sandusky, Inc. was that whilst it was a noble effort, this program or a program like this allows us to effectively take this to the next level by having up to four staff at any given time in the downtown area or available to work in the downtown area over the course of the summer, and one full-time manager who's really in charge of a program that is being run on a national scale.
Okay. I just suggest to you and to everyone and to the staff, I'm not sure whether we do this here at the, when we actually vote on this. It sounds like the difference between what we had before and what you'd like to do now is a matter of manpower. So manpower plus, we've now decided to pay someone else to manage it. That's the only difference. The young lady that did this before, I don't recall any complaints or any concerns from anyone. I do recognize that the amount of cleaning she did would be reflective of how much time she had and how much we paid. And this program, just for everyone's purposes, is, seems extremely expensive for downtown that is not very dirty. And if it's a pilot program with the intention of getting Main Street's businesses to participate at some point in some other fashion, they're going to put some money in the pot or do something. I don't see why we need a pilot program. We've already done it. You either believe in this and you're willing to pay for it, as do the businesses, the things you described about the good things that could be done, apply to every business in the community. And as we, you ask us to take money from that tax money that is paid from businesses outside of this area to pay for the same things they have to do for themselves, we need to make sure that we're really getting value for it. I understand downtown is, it's kind of a special kind of deal where we have to, we need to work together, but at the same time, this seems to be an extremely expensive way to get trash picked up. I believe it was a $26 an hour contract. So just as we move forward, I'm going to ask that you reconsider a different way to approach this. They cost us lots of money.
Through the Commissioner President to Commissioner Poole, just to speak to the first question as to what maybe used to exist and why that went away or why wasn't that a pilot. Previously, I was actually at Ohio City when the Improvement District was formed there in 2011, and Block by Block was hired per contract to serve that area. For several years before that time, we actually did work with the local business merchants to hire similar to the program that you're speaking to that used to exist in Main Street, both cleaning and security services. The challenge was, A, the quality of those services was spotty. In fact, most of the conditions that Greg showed you as existing two weeks ago, I know we were getting complaints as recently as last summer or the summer before when we still had a person being funded by Main Street. So I don't think conditions other than maybe litter removal were actually any better than what they are now. But the biggest challenge to that and why the Improvement District was so critical was because ultimately, we went from having like eight or nine businesses that paid into providing those services to two because they felt like there were businesses that existed within the district that were getting a free ride because they weren't contributing to the program. And so ultimately, even as the need went up, people were dropping out, and the passage of an Improvement District, which I think Greg could have even spoken more to in his presentation, is a critical component to this. But one of the things that Block by Block has done in the past is because we don't have these types of programs in this area, and I think a pilot year, which all we're asking for tonight is come into that pilot, will show you that there is absolutely no comparison between whatever level of services you think may have been being provided downtown previously to what will be provided by this program. Ultimately, you pilot that so you can show people that higher level of service, and then pass an Improvement District, which the Dorn Foundation has already generously agreed to fund a $17,000 grant to bring on a, an entity from Columbus that specializes in the creation of districts, so that as the pilot program is ongoing, we can begin the conversation, or Downtown Sandusky, Inc. can begin the conversation with the property owners about passing that Improvement District. So this is actually a best practice. Not only the services they provide are a best practice, but the idea of piloting this so people can see that difference that you're talking about, we think that's, it's a small risk we ask the commission to take. And I think it's very important to note that the goal in the long term is that the city phases out of this. We have a 50-50 commitment from an organization, and we're making grants to other parts of the city tonight, just as we do all the time for things like economic development from the same portion of resources. Here, we have an existing match. We have an exit strategy into the future so that the Improvement District can eventually take over all of this, and that downtown, I think the point that Greg was making is to Cedar Point and Fireland Regional Medical Center, is that those are entities that contribute a lot to our tax base but don't require a lot of services. We have an opportunity with downtown with 100 businesses there and a lot of investment for that to become a similar third leg to that stool, but ultimately, because we own the public realm there, unlike Cedar Point or Fireland Regional Medical Center, it's up to cities, and Block by Block exists so that they can rally together and create that tax base. Downtown has already asked, more than any other part of this city, to give back dollars through things like tax recruitment financing to pay for its infrastructure because it is a net contributor. So I think what you'll see over time in this pilot, you know, we, the good news is, we have to come back at any time in the future. This is going to demonstrate the quality of those services, and over time, this actually takes the city out of providing this higher level of service there so that we can continue to take taxes generated from jobs downtown and use those to fund services in neighborhoods, including low-income neighborhoods that aren't providing much tax base to the city but require a great deal of our police and fire services.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to give other Commissioners some she has to say.
Absolutely.
I'm going to support this. I've picked up a lot of trash, and some of the other Commissioners have some cigarette butts, and it's a real challenge. I've picked it up on weekends, and Mr. Murray, Mr. Brady, you've been down there with me. I sweep the cigarette butts up. I go back down on Tuesday or Wednesday. It's like nothing's ever happened. This is not about long-term funding. If you read in the packet, it's, this is just a request for this coming year, and then we'll take, it's a snapshot. We'll look at it at the end of the year. I, I'm going to support this. After reading it and thinking about it, we've got to change at some point. We're changing the whole city, and I'm all, we've got to do something downtown. We've got a lot of people coming in. State Theater's going well. I mean, downtown is taking off. We've got restaurants in the summertime, the voting that we get, and we've got a lot of people, you know, come in the community, and I think we've got to keep it clean. I've been down there and dug out bags of trash at Jackson Street Pier. Mr., is Tim still here in the back? He's well aware of that, correct? Down at Jackson Street Pier, you clean it up, you go the next day, and you want to scream. So I'm all for it. I want to give this a chance and see how this works out.
Other Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman. I am liaison to the tree commission, and so seeing Mr. Spear here, I'd like to just ask a quick question, if you could, to describe the workload diversion and displacement that we could benefit from this program, if we can benefit from it, if you, if you don't mind, at the podium, if you could.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Tom, the greenhouse guy. In my 25 years working for the city, in the parks that surround the downtown area, we have never been able to adequately perform the functions that is described in this proposal. Driving through from one park to the other, it's, that's a type of prioritization that you have to drive by certain things that bother you, but you have to go on to the next priority. And that's been one of my big challenges. Things like weeds in the sidewalks, I mean, that, that is, it may seem like a trivial thing, and it may be a little bit underrepresented in the pictures that we had here, but it can get really bad. And those are the types of things that when people come into their town, they may not, you know, that may not be the thing that stands out, but, you know, subliminally, in their, you know, in their mind, they're, it all... their, you know, in their mind, they're, it all creates an overall impression of our city. And I just don't have the staff, and Brad can probably, you know, support this, that we don't have the staff currently to do the types of what I call nitpicking that needs to be done to make that clean and polished look that we've never really had. We've come close, but while we get one area close, another area, you know, drops off. We've added the Jackson Street parking lot, for example. That's going to be a task as well. And if we don't add people, you know, as city employees, somehow that's going to have to be picked up at the expense of another area. And the areas that, you know, frequently are the ones that I have problems with would be Shoreland Park, Jackson Street Pier, Pedlar's Alley, Shade Mylander Plaza. Those are the areas, when we're concentrating on Washington Park to do the things that we are known for, those are the areas that suffer. And if we had a group that would be held accountable, which is different than from what we've had, we've had a great volunteer program. And as great as they've been, they can't be really held accountable, and they come and go. The thing with the Main Street Association, that worked okay, but there was really no direct line of authority, and I would notice things, I had no authority over what the Main Street person did, other than just suggestions. So I think the big thing about this Block by Block proposal is the accountability aspect of it. And I know for sure that I can keep them busy with the things that I noticed that may be unnoticed by other people. Because, you know, in general, like you said, we do have a relatively clean downtown, but if we could take it over to the next level and provide something that would really have an impact and, you know, create the type of environment we want to have for businesses to, you know, to start new ones or to draw tourists back, I think that'd be a good thing. I know it's, it sounds like a lot of money, but we're going to pay it somehow, one way or the other, whether it be through part-time city employees for seasonal type thing, or we're just going to have to continue to have the areas that we don't do well continue not to be done well. So anyway, is there any other questions?
You know, you can sit down. I was just going to say that I had some reservations about this program initially, and I kind of wanted to hear what Tom had to say. And then it seems to me that if we can divert some of our resources away from downtown and benefit the city as a whole, then that satisfies me to at least give it a try on a trial basis. Because from what I've seen here, if we can apply more to plowing the snow, especially downtown, and as I said before, and as everyone knows, I'm on the ADA committee. And so one of the things that happens in the lives of people that are senior citizens or ADA is that they have a problem traveling. And some of them travel with scooters or walkers. And to have the clean sidewalks where they can move about is more precious than gold because a lot of us can just walk over and walk over the snow without a problem. But somebody on a scooter that's going to get their groceries or visiting their friends, it's, you know, it's a life challenge. And so that's something I welcome, if in fact, they can do that in the downtown area and then extend the season for those that are, you know, senior citizens or disabled. So that, that in itself makes me happy. And so I would like to see resources diverted throughout the city. And I spoke with the staff in regards to road repairs, and those things seem to be addressed. And projects like Greg says, on Hancock Street, making sure that Hancock, one of the gateways to our city is addressed. And so I'd like to see that as well and other things, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Is it trash back there?
There's a sign. There's like garbage floating around back here.
We're Block by Block. You're earning your money. You're not going to earn that check.
Something needs to be done.
I'm like, is Hancock? Is that what it is? Is that what it is?
Miss, miss, miss. One sec.
Oh, you want to go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah.
I support the investment back into our community. I think if we're, as Mr. Bolz was talking, actually, I thought about when I was applying for my first job at Cedar Point. One of those jobs was the street, you know, you cleaned up the trash and everything. And I thought about that. I didn't take that job, I took another job, but it showed that they took an interest and investment in their property there. As people were coming into the amusement park, they wanted to show that they cared about what was going on there, so much to the point that they had these ambassadors that were cleaning, but also people that you could talk to, get directions, learn about the amusement park. And I see this with this program is this is just another outreach for us to present Sandusky as a place where we want people, as they're coming here to visit, we are a friendly community, we are a clean community, and we want people to know that we take pride in our community. So I think this is a great pilot program. I like the fact that Mr. Wobser explained this as a pilot program, and I think as we move forward that there will be opportunities for outside funding to help this program continue on. So I think it's a great program, and thank you, Mr. Bolz, for your presentation.
Ms. Lloyd has to be recognized. Just a reminder that we are here on a presentation. We're still going to vote on the legislation, and so it would be appropriate to make comments then, too. So I do want to recognize that Ms. Lloyd has an opportunity to speak.
Who knows? It's just the trash.
No, we didn't get the trash.
I was going to say. It was, yeah, it was, there's a sign.
I did have a question. Mr. Bolz, overflowing trash cans. They're going to take care of that issue? What will they do with the trash that's overflowed?
We will, we will work with the current services and the greenhouse to find a communal dumpster to put that trash into. They'll also have their own dedicated vehicle that they'll be able to put the trash into and take it to a dumpster.
Okay. Here's a couple of things to consider, and what you're asking this program to do, they will follow through and do. It's a manual program, and if you pay enough, assign enough hours to it, it will happen. My issue is dealing with this, deal with the $26 an hour it costs to manage this. It seems that this is too much money to spend for too little work, even though it would be very nice. The next question I would like to point out is that the contract mentions none of some of the things that were talked about by the manager. The area that this covers is not included in the contract. I would suggest if they're going to remove snow, they told us already that they are bringing a pickup truck and a washer, a pressure washer. We already own a Gator and a pressure washer ourselves, so it's a duplication. The marina, there was a nice drawing that shows the expanded area that they're going to go to. The marina, I already paid somebody to clean up the goose poop down there. So again, this sounds wonderful, and it will be very nice, but it is extremely costly. And I, at this point, I'm not certain that I'm going to vote yes for it because there's just too many variables, and we're just too loose with our money paying $50,000 for which we'll have nothing to show, pilot program. But I recognize they won't show up and someone will do this. I think we should be able to manage it ourselves. I got a, we have hired many, many additional managers over the last two, last year and a half, and to not be able to figure out how to do this is troubling to me. The gutters and things downtown that aren't clean, it's because of the street, we have not, do not, we have not managed to plan that the street sweeper can do all the streets. It's a fair part there, and it's our responsibility, not yours.
Through you, Commissioner. I believe the pictures I showed were actually areas where the street sweeper cannot access because of the bump outs. Mark is here if he wants to, if you would like him to address the cost.
That's okay. No, I know it is what it is. I just don't want to pay it. These folks may think it's okay. There's nothing they can say to make that any better. It's all right, though. And where the street sweeper can't get, the point is, we have not managed that ourselves in terms of how to provide a decent service. And every time there's something the staff doesn't do well, going out and paying someone a high-dollar contract to make up the difference for what I think we already paid for is where my issue is with this. And so I won't have to speak when it comes up for vote. I'll simply vote as I think I need to.
Thank you, Mr. Bolz. I think we could conclude that that presentation is concluded before Mr. Waddington gives me the hook, too. We will turn now to Communications. Would someone care to make a motion to accept communications presented by staff?
Second.
Then a motion, second discussion. That objection should be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We turn now to our consent agenda. Would someone care to make a motion?
Ms. Cresser. Vote to Ms. Cresser first, right?
No. We go to you first?
Mm-hmm.
I got it right one week, and then I got off track again. Go ahead, Ms. Cresser.
Before she does that, Mr. Chairman, you do realize I voted no on this last time? As you think I'm going to just slide it through this time?
I'm not trying to slide it.
No, I know you're not. I just recognize that's the, I voted no, and it's, and I.
Do you, okay.
Want to remove it?
Do you want it removed?
No, I just want to make note of the fact there are things of it that I do not agree with. I don't have a problem just passing it because it doesn't change anything if I vote no. But I do want to acknowledge the fact that I did vote no last on the first reading.
Through the Commissioner President to Commissioner Poole, we did prepare responses to three particular items that Commissioner Poole mentioned in the last item. If you'd like us to speak briefly to those, we'd be happy to do it.
We don't have legislation in front of us.
We have legislation, so we're good.
Do this in order. I would like the legislation on the capital plan removed from the consent agenda and placed on the area. I don't think it requires, okay, any one Commissioner is allowed to remove it. And I think Ms. Poole makes a good point, and I overlook that, and I apologize. So to the extent that, we're still working our way through this consent agenda process, but if there, if it has not been unanimous, or if there's been, there have been no votes, it should not go on the consent agenda, it should remain on the regular agenda. So, so we have just, I don't know why we're going to do one item on the consent agenda, but we'll do it anyway. It saves time.
I can just read it. It's an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager and/or finance director to make payment to Camp Management Incorporated for the enrollment fee for the 2018 Workers' Compensation Group Retrospective Rating Program and declaring that this ordinance take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this single item and disregarding for a moment the, disregarding the form of a consent agenda, consent agenda, because we don't really need to do that in this occasion, does someone care to make a motion to proceed with that legislation?
Mr. Chairman.
It's fine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules of protocol with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second discussion. Ms. Cresser, to pull the Commissioners on the motion, please.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. In case anyone is confused about the voting order, we just got our seats mixed up tonight, so that's why we're voting out order. Ms. Cresser, would you present then? Would the committee proceed with the capital item, capital budget next?
That's fine.
Okay.
It'll be an ordinance approving and adapting the 2017 five-year capital improvement plan for the city of Sandusky.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
It's fine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the second.
Second.
Then a motion, second discussion. Ms. Cresser, to pull the Commissioners on the ordinance.
Excuse me, sir. I think the manager wanted to speak.
Yes.
Otherwise, collect it.
Through the Commissioner President to Commissioner Poole and Director Kline can speak to this as well, but I know there were three specific areas that were mentioned as wanting more specifics or areas of concern. One was the basketball courts at J.C. Park or Scott May Courts. I just wanted to point out that there is a line item in the five-year capital plan for J.C. Park, and we do look at in planning for those to make improvements to Scott May Courts at that time. So, so there are funds in there for those courts. And I know Director Link and I have already spoken about some of the public process that we'd wanted working through the REC Board and the Commission on those, so we do believe we'd be able to accommodate that request. The other was the provision that when we do indeed make the water and sewer repairs on Venice and add those sidewalks, that instead of stopping Short Edged Water Drive, I think we all agreed, and the comprehensive plan calls for extending those sidewalks all the way to Tiffin. So Director Kline and I have already begun to look at the cost of potentially adding those sidewalks from various sources. And then finally, you mentioned the water fountains in parks. We can look at those as staff, although we would say that historically, we've treated those not as a capital item but an operating item between the REC or Parks Division and mostly the Water Department. So those wouldn't necessarily be reflected in this plan because we handle those as an operating and maintenance issue and not a capital. Director?
Through Mr. President. As far as the last item, the water fountains, I do want to point out that we heard last year that Commissioners and residents weren't happy with it, and I had forgotten at the time, but we did purchase through our O and M budget six new fountains to put out at the park. So we're going to start replacing them on an annual basis. We can't get parts for the existing fountains, so we will start replacing them. I have a picture, I got a picture today, actually, that I can forward on to show you what they look like.
Anything else? Any other comments on the capital budget? Ms. Cresser, Ms. Poole?
I need to, no, I don't have any comments. We can let it go. It's fine. We're good.
Ms. Cresser, to pull the Commissioners on the, on the ordinance, please.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number one, Ms. Cresser.
Item one is an ordinance amending Part 11 Planning and Zoning Code, Title 1 Zoning Administration, 1107 Definitions, Title 3 Zoning District Regulations, Chapter 1129 Residential Districts, Chapter 1133 Business Districts, and Chapter 1137 Commercial Districts, Title 5 Additional Zoning Requirements, Chapter 1151 Non-Conforming Structures and Uses, and Part 13 Building Code, Title 5 Additional Local Provisions, Chapter 1341 Environmental Health Housing Code, by the addition of new Section 1341.32 Transient Rental Code, by the addition of new Section 1341.32 Transient Rental Property Regulation of the codified ordinances in the manner and way specifically set forth herein below.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance at first reading.
Second.
Then a motion, and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I just want to read a couple of the facts and figures from Lake Erie Shores and Islands. The first item on there is more than 10 million trips are made to Lake Erie Shores and Islands each year, making it one of the most popular tourist destinations in the Midwest. And also, according to the Economic Impact of Tourism Study conducted for Tourism Ohio, visitors spent more than 1.9 billion in the Lake Erie Shores and Islands area in 2015. 1.6 billion of that was in Erie County. So I think Mr. Pugio was correct. They're going to come here either way, whether we have transient rentals or not. But we definitely want to make sure that, that we're embracing tourism. And if people don't want to stay in a hotel, and they're going to rent a house, they're going to rent a house, and they will find one. And if they don't find one in the city of Sandusky, they're going to find one in Huron, or they're going to find one in Norwalk or somewhere in Port Clinton. So if, with that being said, we want them to come to Sandusky. If you're a family and rent a house in Huron and you go to Cedar Point for the day, you're not going to find yourself downtown. You're not going to spend those vacation dollars in the city. You're going to spend them out on 250 in Perkins. So I just want to thank DAF, the residents, the Commission, the entire Commission for working so hard to put something together because we know that there are people in both extremes, and not everyone's going to get what they want. I want to personally thank Commissioner Brady because he has sat down for hours upon hours with me trying to figure out the best solution for this. So I do want to encourage the Planning Department and the Planning Commission to really embrace to really embrace the overlay districts and let's find the perfect locations for those to exist so we can continue to get those tourists here, to spend those tourist dollars. And with that being said, I know we need restrictions for health and safety of our residents and our tourists, but I do feel like one portion of this legislation is a little restrictive for occupancy for certain buildings. So I'd like to make an amendment or a motion to amend the legislation. Currently, what was sent out to us was maximum number of persons who may occupy a dwelling overnight during a transient occupancy shall be limited to two persons per bedroom plus three additional persons. I'd like to amend it to the maximum number of persons who may occupy the dwelling overnight during a transient occupancy shall be limited to two persons per bedroom plus three additional persons per dwelling if the dwelling is in a residentially zoned area. Occupancy limits of dwellings located in other, in areas other than residentially zoned areas shall be determined on a case-by-case basis by Code Enforcement Division.
A second.
Commissioner President?
There's been a motion and second, Mr. Harris, on procedural.
Procedurally, everything is fine. I just want to notify the commission that under Robert's rule, you can only make two amendments. So I know that we had talked about the, the, the other amendment. So just be cautious if you guys collectively, any other amendments, can you just make them together?
To my motion?
It's fine.
Yes, you may.
And what am I adding?
That's a different section. That's a different section.
It's a different section.
Can we find out what? She'd go back and tell what, what section she had. I can't.
This is at...
It's the ordinance as a whole, but so...
I mean, just where on the page so I can reread it.
It's 1340.32, Section E.
What page on the document?
Page nine. Page nine.
All right.
What page of our agenda can you say?
The agenda page is different. Yeah.
Yeah.
One, five, six, seven. I'll tell you in a second. I'm on five, six, seven, eight.
Everyone have it?
Not yet. What, what page are you on at the...
Agenda.
Seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven.
All right.
Ninety-seven. Oh, it shows up here different spots.
I'm sorry. It didn't show.
I think ninety-seven is the official one.
Ninety-seven? All right.
So it's E1 on page ninety-seven. So we're talking about amending Section 1341.32 E1.
All right. Next one.
Mr. Brady, the debate now is on the amendment.
For point of clarification, Commissioner Lloyd, what you are asking to amend would only apply to those transient rental units that are not in a residential area.
Correct. So it would not be in an overlay district if that were in the residential.
Specifically, how would you determine the occupancy? You would leave that up to staff?
Yes.
Say this. Yeah, I'm a little... In clarity, you're saying that...
So to give you, to give you an example, if you had a home that had two bedrooms and you would have, this ordinance doesn't allow for a set of like double bunks. So if you had a family and you had four children, you could have parents in one room and the four kids in, in the other room in the bunks. So this is allowing just a little more flexibility. We definitely have some locations in non-residential areas that, for health and safety, you can fit many more than two per bedroom plus three. So I think with code enforcement going in and taking a look at that, it would give them a little more flexibility to allow a larger occupancy for a home, or not a home, but like if it's, if someone buys a building downtown, it gives them a little more flexibility of occupancy.
Okay, on the amendment.
Chairman, okay. The issues we're having that brought about all this controversy is too many people...
In residential.
In res, yeah, would just disrupt. I mean, if they go to other areas, it's still a disruption. The problem, the base of the problem is the number of people and the kinds of parties and things that occur when you have large numbers of people. So I'm not sure that we're doing a good thing. If someone... Go ahead. Talk to him. Maybe I go over too fast. That's okay.
Commissioner President to Commissioner Poole, in all transparency, throughout this process, not only we had folks like Mr. Pugio reach out to us, but we also had people who actually are allowed to transient rent in business districts. And through, through those discussions, what we realized is that someone might buy what might constitute a warehouse or an 8,000-square-foot property. They might have an open floor plan, so for us to say only two people plus three can sleep overnight in an 8,000-square-foot unit, we don't want to come down heavy on those folks. However, we know that in a residential neighborhood where transient rental is illegal and to protect the neighbors of transient rental folks for the properties that our grandfathered in and would fall under these regulations, we want to limit the number of occupants per bedroom. However, if you run into the situation where someone owns, buys a warehouse, for instance, and they just happen to have like a studio-type unit, we believe that those, those occupancy limits may, should be decided on a case-by-case basis. But in protecting the residents, when it's in a residentially zoned area, I think the measure of, the rule of thumb should just be two persons per bedroom plus three additional people. So in a traditional residential neighborhood, it won't be decided on a case-by-case basis. It would be limited. And you got to start with a premise that it's still illegal in residentially zoned areas except for if an overlay district one is created or with those handful of folks that our grandfathered in. So this is providing flexibility to where transient rental is legal, which would be in usually the business districts.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Further discussion on the amendment. Mrs. Cresser, would you call the roll?
This is a good thing. This is a good... Why didn't you put it in there to begin with? Why are we getting this now since you, we're all discussing it? What's with you?
Through you, Commissioner President to Commissioner Poole, he might be able to speak to it more because he's been in the legislature, but these are, they're, they're a work in progress. All, every ordinance and every piece of legislation.
I mean, there's nothing like putting out something on the agenda that focuses people's attention, people's attention, to say, okay, I got to do something now. Talk to somebody. That's just how it is. It's the nature of the beast. Okay, Mrs. Cresser, on the motion, please.
To amend.
The motion to amend.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes, I need to go back here. I would like to make a motion on, and I'm trying to find it now because I got to go back up through where I've written this. Yeah, page seven. This is on page seven of the document, page eighty-two on our... Maybe it's not. I don't know the long ones.
1151.08.
Eleven fifty. Yeah, I'm trying to get to it. Thirty-three. I'm at thirty-three. Help me.
I'm looking for it.
There I am. All right. It's page seventy-four on our computer.
I don't know. What page is it of the document, though?
Yeah, 1151.08.
Okay.
The last paragraph where it reads, "In case of transient occupancy, et cetera, et cetera, providing transient occupancy or assigned contracts," I request that we replace or with and.
So for clarity of your motion, Mr. Poole, we are dealing with Section 111, 1151.08 A2.
Correct. The last paragraph which reads, and I'll read it out now, "In the case of transient occupancy, use annual nonconformity must be proven through the following methods: documentation of a previous tax bill showing income from the property, providing transient occupancy, and change the next word, which is or, to and, signed contracts indicating the dates in which the transient occupancy use occurred."
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Discussion. I think that's a good change. It makes people, keeps people honest, so I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
So it's, and?
Additional debate or discussion on the motion to amend proof of prior nonconforming use. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on further discussion on the legislation itself.
Mr. Chairman?
Lockhart.
The fee, what is the registration fee? If someone could answer that, just so we... And, and, and let me, let me just say this, that it was brought to my attention that the registration fee should be commensurate with the other registration fees for rental, basic rental. Why should it exceed that? And that's another question, I should say.
Through you, Commissioner President to Commissioner Lockhart, the $500 registration fee, Mayor Lasko and I and, and Planning Zone, we, we, we talked about this, but the cost associated with regulating a commercial industry such as transient rental will require additional efforts that aren't normally seen in traditional rental properties. For instance, each year that someone applies for a permit will require internal and external inspections, which will require manpower. You're also dealing with transient occupancy that will more likely occur on weekends, which will require someone to be on deck to handle those types of calls, along with planning and zoning, department reviewing parking plans for, for properties that are applying for permits. Just the costs associated with regulating transient rental spread out over the various departments warrants a registration fee, a modest registration fee of $500, especially in light of, it's, it's a big business.
Further comments on the legislation?
Mr. Chairman?
Lockhart.
One, one last thing is Ms. McGookie had a good point, and some of the other residents, and Mr. Pugio, I don't know if he's still here or not, but I think that the, the basis here is that landlords should take notice of this legislation and be good neighbors, good steward to their community, and make the residents feel safe. As we go forward, we know we're going to live with some of the grandfathered-in properties and maybe some additional, or maybe not, but I would like to know that the landlords provide a number, contact information, and of course, maintain their property, but make the residents feel safe because that's what really led us to this, is not being good steward to the community and their neighbors. And so that's going forward. I'd certainly like to see that. And make sure that they can legally rent the properties to, to make everyone feel much better about where they live because there's a significant investment in their community, and some are lifelong residents in all parts of the city. So I'd like to see that going forward. Thank you.
I just want to say two thanks before we vote on this. And one is Commissioner Brady, who early on said, you know, could you spearhead this effort and make sure that we get this done the right way? And you did exactly that. You did exactly what I was hoping for when I asked. I'm very thankful, so thank you for that. And I want to thank the residents of the city who have spoken out about this issue. You've been respectful, thoughtful. You've been engaged. You've been patient beyond what we really thought was necessary, was going to be necessary because it's taken a while. You've been transparent in terms of what your objectives are. That makes it so much easier, easier for us to get behind the legislation that we've been advocating for. Special thanks to Al Pugio for being a spokesman, if you will, for those who were concerned about this issue and helping to funnel some of the thoughts and concerns in an orderly way so we could consider those as they came up. I want to thank the staff for working very hard, more than two thanks, you obviously, as you can now tell, for working very hard. This is a very complicated situation to address, cutting across lots of different parts of city government, lots of different laws, lots of different constitutional considerations. And it was all done in a very careful, Mr. Harris lawyerly-like way, and I very much appreciate that. I know Lasko and Ms. Byington were eyeball-deep in all of this. Things Blanca was as well, and so I want to thank everyone who had really a lot to do with making sure we got this right. We didn't do it as fast as we would have liked, but sometimes it's that way, and I think we got it done and it's right. Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That legislation is passed on first reading. Item number two, please.
It will be an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $50,000 to Sandusky Main Street Association, doing business as Downtown Sandusky Incorporated, in relation to their Clean and Safe Pilot Program.
Having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance.
This is on its first reading, yes.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Discussion. A lot of discussion already, and I, but I want to note, Mrs. Cresser, I will not be voting on this legislation in proximity to property law.
Mr. Chairman?
Brady?
I did not participate in the discussion during the public, public hearings. I kept my powder dry for this moment, I guess.
Still only have five minutes.
I'll speed up my rhetoric if I can. No, I will be brief. Two things about this legislation that I, that I like. Anytime you get a chance to leverage your dollars, two to one, I think it's a good opportunity for the city. Dollars are so precious. We're going to spend $50,000 and someone else is going to spend $50,000. So I feel like I'm buying a product in 50 cents, and I've checked, they haven't inflated the price to accommodate that. I like that. The other thing that I want to relate to, and there are a few people in this room that are either as old as I am or approaching that, you may be able to identify with this story. I spent a lot of time walking in the midway of Cedar Point not too many years ago with a guy in a blue shirt, and each time there was trash in front of us, that guy in the blue shirt bent down and picked that trash up and threw it in the trash can. That was Mr. Kinzel. And I finally, after several times of doing that, I said to him, why do you keep doing that? You've got 1,000 employees to do that. He said, Mr. Brady, calls me Mr. Brady, he said, Mr. Brady, I do that because you only get one chance to make a first impression. That's what we get in this city. One chance to make a first impression, and if we can improve our first impression, who knows how many people will relocate here, how many people will open a business here, how many people will take a chance in this city? That, to me, is worth a chance on a pilot program. I know I only have one person on this commission to convince. That's my best shot, Mr. Poole.
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't going to speak, but a couple things, Dick. One, this, this leverage is one to one, not two to one. It's off the top. Also, what I took from, from Mr. Kinzel, because I also worked at Cedar Point from that, was that Mr. Kinzel, who was the president of that organization, and his, that was his business, he was picking up the trash. He didn't call somebody from out of town to come and pay them to do it. He took a significant interest in his own business, which is what I think the downtown businesses and we should be doing with ours here. I think we should be greeting people. I've said that before, and I think we should, as the leadership here, should be pressing members of the community to do that, to take care of the neighbors and to take care of these guests that come here and write a check to have somebody else do the basic business that we should be doing ourselves for our own place is, is an issue. I did want to say one more thing, just, this will be, be it. Included in this was, was snow removal. I was suggesting to you that as, two things, one, in this contract, there's nothing in there that says they're bringing any snow removal equipment. And as you downsize the number of people in this contract in the winter, I'm going to be interested to watch your one guy shovel all those sidewalks downtown. I'm not sure that this is going to be all that the hype has blown it up to be. It doesn't seem just as getting rid of the trash. Trash cans get overflowed because you either don't have enough trash cans or the company we already pay to empty those cans are not scheduled to empty them often enough. Paying someone else, I'm not sure what they're going to do with the trash. We don't have a place to put it downtown. It goes away in a truck three days a week. So I'm done.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I'll be abstaining because I'm a board member of Downtown Sandusky, Inc.
Anything else, commissioners? Brady forgot to mention a third reason you like this legislation. Because if the business improvement district passes, you're going to stick it to me.
That's true. The Murray and Ray uniform will have to pay for this.
Happily so. Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Ms. Lloyd?
Abstain.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
I said motion. I made an error. That was on the ordinance. Do we need to redo the vote, Mr. Harris? Yes, we do. Mrs. Cresser, would you please accept my apology and call the vote on the... Mr. Cresser, would you please accept my apology and call the vote on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Give me another chance, right?
Yeah, we talked about it.
No.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Ms. Lloyd?
Abstain.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That passes on first reading.
Correct.
Item number three, please.
It will be an ordinance adopting amendment number one to ordinance seventeen dash zero six four, passed by the City Commission on March twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen, making general appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the City Charter.
Have you heard this communication? How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
Second discussion. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number four, please.
Item four is an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $52,397.15 to Cagland LLC, in relation to the property located at two zero five five Cleveland Road, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance and the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion. Ms. Murtory, I understand you would like to present on this item and the next one as well.
Yes, I just have a couple of slides on each. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the commission, and I also have Bart Barna, Mr. Barna is here from Casper, so he may chime in or answer any questions that you have as well. I would absolutely welcome you to do so. So, Casper Auto Group is expanding its service offering by opening a body shop located at two zero five five Cleveland Road. This project includes site improvements, interior build-out, equipment purchases, and comprehensive facade renovation and new signage. This project will create twelve to fifteen new jobs at the project site, with an estimated annual payroll of around $600,000. The grant amounts presented this evening were approved by the Economic Development Incentive Committee on April eleventh, two thousand and seventeen. So, this first slide is just a picture of two zero five five Cleveland Road in its current state, and this is a picture, a rendering of the exterior once the project is complete. In terms of the project costs and the grant amounts, the sum of the facade and signage portion of the project equates to just about $60,000. That amount includes one signage element that is not actually included in this slide and in those amounts, and that is signage according to the estimates from Brady Signs. Relative to that amount is a facade, my recommendation and the committee's, the committee's recommendation is the facade and signage grant of $37,397.15. This is approximately 62% of the total project cost as it relates to facade and signage, which is in line with our guidelines. Secondly, site improvements, build-out and equipment costs amount to just over $190,000, and these costs are for a paint booth, other shop equipment, interior repair and modernization, lighting and blacktop repairs, a small business assistance grant in the amount of $15,000, which is the maximum per our guidelines, is recommended to help with these costs. That's about 8% of the total project costs associated with this portion of the project. Therefore, the total grant amount is $52,397.15 relative to total project costs of just over $250,000. These amounts do not include the acquisition, and they do have the option to buy the building by the end of two thousand and nineteen for an additional $585,000. Just lastly, some of my comments, and then again, if Mr. Barna would like to chime in, I would absolutely encourage that. This project increases employment and payroll within the city of Sandusky. It also continues the investment momentum that we've seen recently along the Cleveland Road corridor, which is a major gateway into our city.
Thank you, Ms. Murtory. Ms. Barna, you're welcome to speak, you don't feel obligated to.
Well, I just want to say thank you to all of you for having a program like this. It's definitely what made it easy for us to make that decision at two zero five five, even though we had a property next to our Toyota dealership on Strub Road. We are the only new car dealerships within Sandusky City limits, both at the Chrysler Store and the Buick GMC Store. And so, you know, we've had that empty building there for so long, and every time we'd drive by it, we knew that it was an eyesore, and with the exponential growth that we've had at the Buick GMC Store, we saw it as a great opportunity for the city of Sandusky, have a better, have a more beautiful building, and absolutely hire more people. You know, we actually see that property as an expansion property even more so down the road, so twelve to fifteen jobs is actually a drop in the bucket, we believe. We think that by the end of this whole project, we should be up to about fifty employees there once we take our detail shop from our Toyota store and all of our body shop business from the Buick GMC Store, and then making service, more service abilities at the Buick GMC Store.
Thank you.
The last thing I just wanted to say was just thank you to Commissioner Lockhart. He's been instrumental in helping us get everything we needed. You know, Mr. Whoopser, and of course, Ms. Murtory, they were amazing, so it's great that you have that kind of staff available to you. You know, it's just real thankful.
Commissioners, questions or comments on the legislation?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I would just like to say thank you for being here, and to take a message back to Mr. Casper, we appreciate him doing business in the city of Sandusky.
He would have been here, but there was a hospital committee board meeting, so I just, yeah, absolutely, I'll pass that on.
And of course, Mr. Chair, I always like to hear new businesses coming into our town or expanding and making more jobs for the citizens of Sandusky. Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Ms. Murtory, now that you've let the cat out of the bag, there's money in this project, I will have to abstain from voting. So, thank you very much. I would have been.
You told me before tonight, as you told me. Okay. Look out for my colleagues. Further questions or comments? Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Abstain.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item five is an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $10,400 to Michael R. Meinger at L., in relation to the property located at seven four five Sycamore Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I'd like to thank you, Mike, for putting some money in that neighborhood there. Appreciate it.
I appreciate it, and I hope they keep working on it, keep more coming.
Chairman, I've searched deeply, and I can't find anything wrong with this.
It's amazing.
That's solid.
I don't even have to give a presentation.
I know.
Keep looking.
I've lost your sense of humor. Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item seven is an ordinance amending ordinance number seventeen dash zero two two, passed on February thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, for the purchase of six light transit vehicles from American Bus Services Incorporated of Canal Winchester, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Sandusky Transit System, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance and the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion. Lasko, why don't you recap, if you wouldn't mind, please, where we are, where we still need to go to finish this project, how we're going to fund it?
Yes, through you, Commission President, members of the commission. If everyone's aware, about a year ago, the city was successful in receiving a $100,000 grant through the Ohio Development Services Agency, which allowed us to, through their abandoned gas station program, to look at removing the tanks at the former Sunoco Station, and then ultimately demolish the gas station structure itself as well, and sort of reposition that site for redevelopment. One of the unknowns when you get into digging up underground storage tanks is what else may be on the site, and also, sort of the extent of the soil contamination on the site as well. Through our first $100,000, we engaged Manikin Smith Group after a process in which we did a request for qualifications, and through that process, we dug up the two known 8,000-gallon tanks, drained them, and remediated about 1,000 tons of soil from the site, through removal from the site. Unfortunately, through those efforts, we found a third undocumented unknown tank, which sort of sits below the Sunoco Station itself, and also, because of that, we couldn't fully eliminate the contamination on one of the four walls of the other tanks that were formally removed. So, fortunately, through the commitment from the state, under Director David Goodman, whoever oversees the department, we were able to reapply for a second $100,000 grant, which we were notified of about a week or two ago from the state. So, our request is to enter into another professional services agreement with Manikin Smith Group, to remove the third tank, remove the additional contaminated soil, and ultimately demolish the gas station structure as well. And I will note, the contract with Manikin Smith is about $4,800 less than the grant that was approved. That's because the city's simply, to speed things up, going to contract out the demolition of the gas station structure itself. So, that $4,800 was removed from the grant with Manikin Smith, so we want to get the gas station structure out of the way, so they can start with their underground storage tank removal as quick as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Lasko, and thank you for your diligence on this project. Questions or comments, commissioners? It seems as though, just before the state of the state, we had a lot of grant applications that kind of clicked in place, so we should do that again next year. But I don't think it's going to change. Would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item seven is an ordinance amending ordinance number seventeen dash zero two two, passed on February thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, for the purchase of six light transit vehicles from American Bus Services Incorporated of Canal Winchester, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Sandusky Transit System, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion. Ms. Byington, could you highlight for us this legislation and why it is that we find ourselves in this position of modifying the earlier contract, and then address the question of what we do with the proceeds from the buses that we are disposing of?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. We are requesting to amend the ordinance, which originally was to purchase four low-floor buses and one light transit vehicle. The total cost of that project was going to be $426,653. Majority of that would be paid from grant funds, and the city's share at that point was $42,665. Through recent communications with ODOT and our new provider, First Transit, it was brought to our attention that it would make more sense to purchase six light transit vehicles. These buses will still be ADA compliant, but they're better for maintenance, and they're more cost-effective. So, the new total cost that's being proposed for six versus five vehicles will not exceed $337,867, still mostly being paid with the grant funds and a total local share of $33,787, which is a decrease. The local share will still be paid from the capital replacement funds, and we're requesting this ordinance be amended under section fourteen to allow ODOT to process the vehicle purchase before the May thirty-first deadline. To Mr. Schwanger's question in regard to the bus disposition, it depends on where the buses originate from. So, our fleet historically has had some buses from service providers, the last one being MV. We've had some buses donated for our use from different agencies, like serving our seniors, and then the city has purchased vehicles, we've had some donated, and we've purchased some through ODOT, with ODOT funds. So, if we receive a bus through any means of grant funding, then there's a disposition policy that you have to follow through with before you can dispose of it, but most of the time, either the money that would be collected from salvaging a vehicle or selling a vehicle would be returned to the transit budget to continue to be able to operate or purchase more vehicles.
Thank you. So, less money, more buses, easier to maintain, and a smaller match.
Yes.
You're trying to provoke Mr. Poole into finding something wrong.
Well, you know, if you just left well enough alone.
Why'd you pull him?
Because I could have asked why you didn't get it right the first time, if I just wanted you.
Let's kid at your horse.
Yeah, I know.
Questions or comments, commissioners? Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted, and that concludes our regular items of business, and we, now, Mr. Whoopser?
Thank you, Commission President, thank you to the audience who sat through these issues, and staff. I'll start with donations.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item seven is an ordinance amending ordinance number 17-022 passed on February 13, 2017, for the purchase of six light transit vehicles from American Bus Service Incorporated of Canal Winchester, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Sandusky Transit System and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
It's time.
I move for the adoption of this, this ordinance under the suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion. Lot of objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Thank you. Additionally, a donation of two American flags and one bracket for the canoe launch facility was received from Commissioner Dave Waddington with approximate value of $35. I'd ask for a motion.
So moved.
Then a motion, second, discussion. Lot of objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to the Crebels who have maintained that park very nicely for so many years now.
Absolutely. And then finally, with donations, a $50 donation to the Police Canine Fund was received from James and Barbara Tom. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion. Lot of objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved again with our thanks.
Thank you, commission. Moving on to new business, the police department. They'll be shaking things up and hosting their traditional coffee with the cop at Live Liv Aloha, I should say. Really nice smoothie place at 125 West Market Street on April 28th from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Please join the police department for conversation and a healthy shake. Also, the finance department. Auditors will return in May for additional testing on the 2016 financial audit, and the next scheduled finance committee meeting is Friday, June 23rd at 7:45 a.m. in the commission chambers. Moving on to public works. For the Brownfields Assessment Grants, the city is working to develop an advisory group designed to assist staff with grant-associated decisions. The task force will consist of Angie Byington, Aaron Klein, Matt Lasco, Steve Rucker, a developer, a real estate agent, and a local business leader. Also, staff are creating a process to utilize GIS mapping to better communicate road closures or detours related to construction projects. The map will be distributed to the register and placed on the city's website. The hope is to expand these communications to boil alerts and other press releases when possible. Also, the chemical feed emergency intake project was completed in February at Big Island. The contractor for the carbon system successfully activated the equipment last week. These projects will allow for treatment flexibility during harmful algal blooms in the future. The contractor's completed tree removal and is almost finished with the sidewalk repairs for the 2016 project. We're asking residents to refrain from imprinting on or vandalizing the concrete after it is installed. All cases of tampering are being reported to the police department, and I'll say I've noticed so much sidewalk, you know, under construction these last few weeks, it's been really exciting to see that, and thanks to all the staff who are involved in that. Also, as approved at the last commission meeting, staff submitted a grant application for potential wetland improvements in the vicinity of the Landing Park project in East Sandusky to ODNR. That's a former Griffing site. Although design has not started on that project, award of the ODNR grant dollars would allow the city, Cedar Fair, and the Erie Metro Parks to focus on physical infrastructure improvements rather than wetland improvements, which would ultimately improve the overall experience of the park as well as potentially add to the amount of investment that can take place there, improving that experience. Moving on to community development. I think I can skip the gas station piece and move on to the second piece, which is the regular. Planning Commission meeting will be held Wednesday, April 26 at 4:30 p.m. in the first floor conference room, and the regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is scheduled for May 18 at 4:30 p.m. in the first floor conference room. Moving on to recreation. The Go Green Arbor Day Celebration and Greenhouse Open House will be held on Saturday, April 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Sandusky Greenhouse. Again, that's Saturday, April 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Sandusky City Greenhouse. That's a really fun, family-friendly event. I know Brad and Tom Spear and everyone worked really hard on that in the past. Also, take the Kids Fishing Fun Day in memory of Chuck Hank will be held on Sunday, May 7th, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Shoreline Park. And then finally, I wanted to announce that the citywide cleanup will also take place on Saturday, April 29th for Earth Day. The drive-through drop-off day, the location will be the Shelby Street Boat Ramp at 101 Shelby Street, the overflow parking lot. The hours will be from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Bring your unwanted items and volunteers will be waiting to help you. I know already Commissioner Waddington, Commissioner Brady, and Commissioner Murray have signed up for that, as well as several other staff will be volunteering. Just to note what we can't accept at that, our hazardous waste, paint, propane tanks, any liquid recycling materials, household garbage, commercial landscaping debris, residential yard debris, including trimming sods, stumps, or rock, or televisions. We can take unwanted household items, electronics, furniture, any bicycles or exercise equipment, appliances, batteries, prescription pills, unwanted paper documents with a limited two boxes per household, and passenger car and light truck tires. A limited 10 per person and a maximum of 1,000 tires can be collected for the day. So I want to thank Brad and Commissioner Waddington and everyone else who's been involved in setting that up. I know these cleanup days have made a big impact and people appreciate having time to get that stuff out of their house, and their neighbors appreciate it, not sitting out in the front yard or in the backyard as well. So that concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waddington. Commissioners, questions or comments for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
Just a minute. Are the restrooms open in the parks? Are they all open now?
Sure. I'll let Shoreline.
Yeah, okay. Are we closed?
Yes.
Additional questions or comments for the manager? Any items of old business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
The rec board recommended, and I met with Mr. Link today, or earlier today, at their last meeting, to shrink the size down. I know some of the commissioners were concerned about either going to half court or having a full court basketball. So we've shrunk it down. It's going to be two baskets. We've shrunk it down to about grade school size, 64 by 42, so it's a lot smaller. We shrunk it down. We heard Mr. Poole's plea about having a full court, and I want to thank Brad and the rec board for that recommendation at our last meeting. And I want to get that done. You know, we voted 7-0 last, almost a year ago now, for that park, and I remember Orlando's comments, and I relayed that to Mr. Link today. We talked about that, how neat that, how neat that would have been if he would have had a full court basketball in his neighborhood at the time. And I know it's different, and at times we may do things wrong, so we shrunk it down, okay? And we're trying to, I talked to Mrs. Twine today, caught her. I talked to Mrs. Lloyd, and that's Commissioner Lloyd, certainly his dentist, and I think this would be the way to go, and I'd just like to make a motion that we can have, Mr. Link, go ahead and get this done. Let's get this park finished, and we've shrunk it down. We've heard from the neighbors. I'm not, I understand everyone's not going to be happy. In the winter, it's not going to have lights, so at 5:00, 5:30, you know, hoops are down. And I'm just hoping that at some point in the future, we can look at the Scott May parks, like we talked about tonight, J.C. parks. I like Mr. Poole's idea about extending the one end and maybe making them full court, or maybe even adding another court out there. So that's just something that, I'd like to get that cleaned up and off the plate. I've heard about it in coffee shops at school, and I won't move on from that. So I'd like to make that motion. If we could go ahead with this recommendation to shrink this court down and then give Mr. Link the approval for that, to go ahead with this.
There's been a motion, is there a second? Then a motion, second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
I think this is wonderful that we're moving forward on this. Please, I assume, and if you have not done so, just be sure we've addressed this with the neighbors in a reasonable fashion. I realize we're not going to, please, everyone, but at the same time, make sure that we can say we reached out and made an effort, especially for those folks that are close by that have made complaints. Are those folks on board with this, the ones that we haven't actually come forward?
I haven't talked, okay. Listen, I haven't talked to everyone out there, but I know Mr. Link's been out there on several occasions. I've been out there 30 times a weekend since trying to talk to the kids. Not a lot of parents, okay, that I've talked to, and I understand the concerns, but I don't want to have a half court there and make it something that we didn't promise. I'd like to keep my promise as far as, you know, this court, make it a full court. It's going to be small enough. I don't think a lot of the bigger kids are going to want to play. So that, that was a good idea, you know, that you brought up, and I'd like to look forward with it now and have this off my plate.
I think, I think it's great, Mr. Chairman, as long, and pleased when you go back to the rec board, discuss further with parks, looking at them with perspective of what we want there. We've done the environmental thing of making it smaller so it doesn't automatically attract adults. Recognize that we may, because young kids, little kids are there, it's for them, we may have to take another step to, to ensure that kids do get the access to it, because that's, that's what makes their, the lives better for the, for the families in that neighborhood.
There's been a motion, a second, further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and thank you for all of the input and dogged pursuit to get this thing finished. Good luck, Mr. Link. All right, other items of old business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
At a recent coffee with the commissioners, Commissioner Waddington and I were challenged by some residents to get the city to do a little better job at calming the noise from bikes, and it was their information to us that these signs are available, printed and available from the promoter of Bike Week, Mr. Ernst. And so I'm, I'm wondering if we cannot have someone on our staff reach out to Mr. Ernst, take, take control of his signs. He's willing, if he is willing to give those signs up, for us to reach out to residents on at least the main thoroughfares and get these placed, placed. Understanding was, we had, we had 30 signs last year and only three of them got placed. So that, that's not a proper use of, of an asset that Mr. Ernst has already, already purchased. And if we can help him distribute it, perhaps we can just ratchet down a few decibels of motorcycles. So if we can find someone on staff to take charge of that.
Through, through the commission, President, Commissioner Brady, we'll have Talon Floor, Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator, and we coordinate with Chief Orzak's Community Impact Officers about a distribution channel in the neighborhoods for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Other items of old business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? Oh, sorry. I think Mr. Waddington spoke first.
I just want to say, we had our.
I was going to, I was going to talk about that. That's.
Oh, I was going to. Okay.
No, no, I was just going to say that, you know, I like to commend Commissioner Brady and Commissioner Waddington for stepping up and getting into the conversation and having a panel discussion about the opiate addiction. I myself have lived on a path and started, wait, let me see that right. I'm not addicted. I mean, I, you know, I've been having a discussion with the Health Department, Bay Shore Counseling, and the hospital, myself, about the opiate addiction, and it's good to have more people involved in talking about that. And so the panel discussion that they had over the weekend, I think brought in maybe 25 or 30 people as well as the panel guests, and so, and of course, I've spoken with the chiefs, fire chiefs here, and so we, we certainly need to do more about that, and I wanted to hear what results that you had from the panel discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Clerk Kelly Cresser, pulling all the folks together. We have a great, great turnout. We, I think, what, 10 or 11 on the panel, 30, 35 was proud, if I had to guess. But what I learned, and I think that was in the paper, what I learned in two hours was way more than you could ever read in that two hours from people that deal with that every day in our community. Like, thank the police chief, Mario, fire chief, everyone that came from the staff. That, that's important. Officer Brown, I believe, was in the back that day. It's, out of anything, we're going to build relationships out in the community, and Justin Harris, our law director, who owes me a beer tonight later, but that was.
Moderator.
Yep. Mr. Murray was there, Commissioner Lloyd, so, Mr. Wobser was there. I'm trying to think if I forgot anybody.
Mario?
But it was a great learning night. Maybe I'll pass this off to Mr. Brady. I, I thought it was.
You know, that, there's probably a diverse opinion what the role of an elected official or someone that's real job is to pass legislation is. I, I believe that that is a role that we can fill. We can do, we did not solve that problem Saturday morning, but what we can do, and what we do have the ability to do, is perhaps shine a bright light on, on a very bad problem. And there were so many people there that, that have a passion for curing that disease. I, again, I want to thank Chief Orzak and our, and our fire chief also for participating on that panel, and you could tell that there was such enthusiasm among the distinguished group of people we had. Most of you are being paid, you know, for what you do, for the services you render, but none of you are doing it for the money. And, and there was so much passion there that I sincerely believe that perhaps that day, we didn't solve the problem, but the information that we took from that day, if it saves just one life, it will make, it will make all of our lives better in all forms. So thanks, thanks to you and Mr. Harris for showing up, and Mrs. Cresser for being the brains of the operation once again and pulling it all together for us. Thank you.
Other items of old business? Items of new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
The next couple of weeks, I got the biggest weekend, American birding, and we have our sign down at the Pathway and River Wrap. I know butterflies, bees, but from May 5th to May 14th, I suggest stop down there. You'll see vans from Lakeside, Ottawa County, Cleveland area. Last year, we had folks that were from out of state, Minnesota, North Dakota, that I ran into, grabbed a coffee, go down there, and I thought, wow, this is really neat. Right in the city of Sandusky. I mean, and you helped on the cleanup down there, and I think that's neat, that's right in our backyard. And this birding, I know a lot of people laugh, it's big, it's big. I even got a pair of them out there.
It's really big, and it's a very fragile area.
Yeah.
And it's important that, you know, you started years ago, recognizing that as a, as an important site for us that had been pretty much neglected and forgotten back there. We first had a canoe launch, and then we've got cleanups around all the cells, and I think that it's really, we found, you know, it's something that's on the map today, and it's an important, critical natural resource that's really bizarre to have in the midst of a living area. So it's special and deserves to be protected.
And I'll thank Mr. Link for coordinating that work down there, because we've got, we took out a lot of brush and that's a lot of work for his staff, so thank you.
Other items of old, new business? If not, then we will turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any items related to the city, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Share with us your thoughts. Yes. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Couple of things I forgot to do, commissioners. So the first one is a, is a motion that requires Commissioner Brady to correct. So we have a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and Dan Dolehund, who has a lot of experience with real estate matters, has applied to fill that term, and I would like to make a motion to appoint him to that position.
So moved.
There's a motion, a second, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then on the planning commission, we had, we have a vacancy, and we had intended to, it was a little bit of cleanup business, we just, we sort of forgot this before, and I apologize to Mr. Mears for having forgotten to do this, but there is a vacancy on the planning commission, and I would appreciate a motion to appoint Mr. Mears to fill a term that will expire December 31st, 2018. Someone care to make such a motion? Okay, I guess that position is going to remain unfilled. Okay, Mr. Meister. Chief?
Mr. President, members of the commission, thank you for the support for our neighborhood. It is, it is a great neighborhood. We set out to buy that house, and I didn't even know about the grant availability of it, so that was a nice surprise, but I also want to congratulate you on assembling the staff that you have now. I know you guys get beat up a lot, and I've sat through many of those meetings, but a couple of projects I've been working on, I've met with the Law Department, Economic Development, Planning, Zoning, Engineering, the Building Department, the Zoning Commission, Mr. Brady himself, again, and I'm telling you, if it's the best treatment you could get, if you want to go to a community and expect how helpful and knowledgeable and energetic and everybody, I can't say enough, I know there are a lot of communities that you will not get that red carpet treatment in when you're trying to, trying to get something done, so it was a good experience for me, and I like to see that side of the city. So I, I would encourage you to keep supporting your staff and give them the tools they need So it was a good experience for me and I like to see that side of the city. So I would encourage you to keep supporting your staff and giving the tools they need and stay out of their way. I'm one of the guys that say that the council does do legislation and shining the bright light's great, you know, shining on these people right here because they do a good job every day. So thank you. Thanks again.
Well put, chief. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Just a couple of questions on the city manager's report. It mentions the demolition of pedestrian bridges. Does anybody know where those are at? What bridges we're talking about? Demolition of pedestrian bridges.
It's fine. It looks like you know something about that.
Yes, sir. That is something that we are trying to work with ODOT. While they're doing the 250-mile road overpass, we're trying to get them to put, to allow us to demo that sky-rise bridge that's out there. But we're getting a little resistance right now, so we're pushing and we're trying, but we'll see if it comes down.
Okay, so that's the one that used to go over the tracks, over towards Hank? Yeah, okay, I got you. Thank you. The wayfinding plan that I think we've pretty much gotten bids back on doing? No? Okay, okay. Okay, all I'm going to say about that is let's make sure that when we do hire whoever's going to do that, that we also find a way to do signage, directing people to different access points along the waterfront. Guys know what they are, but, and I bring this up once every couple of months, so just to kind of remind you. The Lions Park, two issues at Lions Park. Number one, do we have a plan for when the buoys for the submerged break wall might happen? And also, the armor stone down at the east end to protect further, from further erosion? Is there a timeframe for that?
May, we've always said that May for the buoys and we're working on the bluestone grasses for erosion control.
Okay, but no armor stone?
We have not.
As far as you know?
To the armor stone.
Okay, okay. And I'm not talking about rebuilding the break wall, I'm just talking about armor stone along the shoreline. Okay, but there's still maybe a plan for that yet? Okay, super. Also, I haven't been out there in a couple of weeks at Lions Park, but it looks like the swing sets that were close to the pavilions have been taken down. Is there plans to replace anything anywhere near those pavilions? Because it looks like the plan is for, if I'm having a family reunion or something at those pavilions, I've got to send my children, my grandchildren, all the way over to the splash pad area if they want to play on any equipment. Do we have any plans for that? Maybe? No?
Apparently we don't.
Don't know. Okay, okay. The drinking fountain issue, we're replacing six this year, and I'm not a plumber. Dave Waddington's not a plumber, right, Dave? It looks to me like the drinking fountains we have now that are probably 50 years old, 25 years old, you can buy the parts at Home Depot. I mean, except for the bowl on top. Okay, that's obviously fabricated, you got to purchase that. But in the meantime, that we're replacing six, is there a way to address the rest of them that may needs a little bit of work? I don't know. Last year, I ran a program and I continue to do this this year as part of the city's rec program at Huron Park. Those kids go across the street and they play every day at Huron, at the old Huron baseball diamond. And last year, I don't believe that there was a drinking fountain there. And it looks like it's been capped off with concrete. Is there a way to revisit that and try to get a drinking fountain at that location?
Looks like it might be in the works.
Last item is the Landing Project. Last weekend, it was, two weekends ago, I was on my way to Vermillion and I took Route 6. Only two or three of the fields were being used at the Sports Force complex. They were busing people from Sawmill Creek down to the, down to the Landing, I'm sorry, the Sports Force because there was insufficient parking. I saw kids with baseball bats and gloves walking on the wrong side of the street from Sawmill to get to Sports Force. Are we in any kind of discussions with Cedar Point to try to fix the parking problem so that we don't have an accident?
A couple of us have raised some alarm about all of that. I don't know that there's a solution in hand just yet, but I understand that longer-term plans include an expansion of the parking lot.
Okay.
I don't know when, though.
Okay, okay. Like I said, there was only like three fields being used. I mean, it was only a part of the facility was being used.
It's an intolerable situation.
Okay.
I agree. And I was appalled to see those kids walking along the road like that.
And I know a lot of that's not even in the city of Sandusky, so it's really not.
No, it isn't. But I mean, we still care about that.
Right.
Something that, I'm sure the folks at Sports Force care about it as well.
Sure.
And so it's, I mean, it's, it's a kink in the opening of a new business, I mean, a new business model. I'm pretty confident because of the quality of people involved, it'll get worked out and it'll get worked out soon. I just don't have the details.
Yeah, okay.
We have raised concerns.
Okay, hopefully ASAP because it's only going to get worse. It's not going to get better. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
I live at 5309 Columbus Avenue, down at the other end. I've been making notes about some of the things that we were talking about. As far as the block-by-block situation, okay, it's a pilot program. When, at the end of the pilot program, if someone comes up and says, I can do this cheaper, I hope this is going to be a consideration, at $26 an hour, that's more than what they're making at General Motors right now. Their starting pay at General Motors is $14 an hour. So for $13 an hour, you can order, hide two people instead of $26 for one. The comment was made about the housing, the rentals. If someone rents in Huron, they won't come here, they come here. I talked to people Saturday or Sunday all day. There were people here from Elyria, they come up here regularly to sit on the pier. I talked to people from Huron because they don't have that pier view. They got the river, but you can't park on the edge of the river. You have to get out of your car and walk down there. You've got the lake, but you've got to go through the park. You can't park on the edge. They came here. There were a lot of cars down there. Everybody was having their lunches and their dinners down there yesterday. And I talked to people that have boathouses here and every Sunday, they go to church, they come down down for dinner, they go to Toph's and get their ice cream and they sit on the pier and have their ice cream. I talked to people from Norwalk. They come here. They like that pier. Just a consideration. They will come. If you're in Huron, you're coming to Sandusky and you're going to Vermillion and you're going along the coast. You talked about the butterflies. I gave a plan to Mr. Poole of the third of an acre, I don't know what the house size that is, the park, Parklet, over by Chesapeake Lofts. It's a butterfly hummingbird garden. And I gave him lists of plants that will attract butterflies and hummingbirds and nighttime hummingbirds and nighttime moths and stuff that I thought would be a good consideration for that area. And it could be, if it's natural stuff, it kind of takes care of itself. It will take maintenance, but like everything else, but it would take care of itself, pretty much. And the birding week, we need to do something in Sandusky that leads to the birding because it's a whole week. I went up to McGee Marsh, I go up every year. There are license plates in the parking lot from every state in the union, from Ontario, from New, from Mexico. They come from everywhere. And we need to pull them around here, get them into the hotels, get your hotels in town. These empty buildings could be turned into hotels and you can come down here and do I'm thinking that's all I got notes on. This, I'm a rookie, so I've never done this before. And I'm just, that was my concern as far as the block-by-block, as far as, when you brought up the butterfly thing, I go to McGee Marsh and then I stop at the popcorn place in Port Clinton on the way home, you get a discount for your popcorn. And so, hey, a discount for coffee or butterfly-shaped cookies or something, anything that would bring people this way through that area. I think that's about it. I was writing notes. The block-by-block, I was wondering if it would be cheaper to, I mean, we'll see how it works if we're going to do this, but wouldn't it be cheaper to give half of that money or two-thirds of that money to the greenhouse so they can hire people? And if the block-by-block people are going to be in here doing this, are they going to hire local people? Or are they going to hire people from out of the area and they're going to come in here? Because we want them hiring local people. If there's going to be, I'll sweep the carp, I'll sweep the streets for $16 an hour.